Thank you all. I would like to go ahead and call the Monday, August 12th meeting to order. And I thank you all for coming out this evening. And we would like to ask Mr. Roger Wise to come forward for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, sir.
Everybody, ready, set, and let me sit down. Once a sergeant, always a soldier. Freedom is not free. Safety is not. All the veterans in the room and first responders, on your feet. Put you service. Remembering freedom, service is not. A veteran, walk up to them and say, "Thank you." Hunter, you walk up to them and say, "Thank you." Our community safe, safer. Good jobs have never been more. Up in the morning, at car, and they say, "Honey, I'll see you this evening." Never forget that. Remembering, freedom is not free. Safety is not free. Everybody else, on your feet. Join these great Americans. Let's pledge the flag of the greatest country in the world, the United States of America.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
Thank you, Mr. Wise. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Judy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Tizer. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously. Now we are on to a good news story. It's a presentation of a check by the Roswell Masonic Lodge to the Roswell Police Department. Would you all please come forward? Excuse me, I am so sorry to interrupt, but we can't hear a word you're saying. Is there any chance?
Chief, what you're saying, we're Roswell Masonic Lodge, Roswell, Georgia. We've been here a long time. We veritate seriously our responsibility in making Roswell a better place. We are so pleased that you've accepted the challenge. So pleased that you're here. We talk for a while. I feel pleased that you're here. We have us saying, "Welcome to Roswell." Also as a mentor. He said, "What grade is she in?" That's no lie. I don't know what grade she is, but she is pretty. Yes, she is. Guy's got a good eye. So thank you so much. Congratulations. Mayor, City Council.
Picture with you all. We can dance with you. Thank you again, gentlemen. The next item on the agenda is the reading of a proclamation for City of Roswell 811 Day. Thousands of times each year, the underground infrastructure in Georgia is damaged by those who do not have underground lines located prior to digging, resulting in service interruption, environmental damage, and a threat to public safety. And whereas in 2005, the Federal Communications Commission designated 811 to provide contractors and homeowners a single number to contact utility operators to request the location of underground lines at the intended dig site. And whereas, the North Fulton County Utility Coordinating Committee, a stakeholder-driven organization, decided to, dedicated to the prevention of damage to the underground utilities in Georgia, promotes the National 811 Notification System in an effort to reduce these damages. And whereas, damage prevention is a shared responsibility. By using safe digging practices, the contractors and homeowners of the City of Roswell can save time, money, and help keeping our infrastructure safe and connected. And now therefore I, Lori Henry, the mayor of the City of Roswell, do hereby proclaim the day of August 11th, 2019, as 811 Day in the City of Roswell, and encourage contractors and homeowners alike throughout the City of Roswell to always call 811 before digging. Safe digging is no accident. Thank you all very much. And that's an easy number to remember. We've got 411, we've got 911, and we've got 811. So I would encourage everyone to use that service before you dig. The next item on the agenda is Administration and Finance Department, Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. So item number three of today's agenda, approval for the mayor and/or city council administrator to sign a contract with Planty Moran for a citywide organization and cultural study in the amount of $100,000.
Thank you, Councilmember Zapata. This item is an item that was deferred from the last council meeting for some additional information in regards to an organizational and cultural analysis. Request that was brought forward to you. So I want to take a few minutes and kind of talk about the steps that we take towards awarding of a contract or a service in this particular case. We go through and define the need for service. We'll talk about that in a few minutes. Write the scope of work. The RFP is issued. We review the offers, interview the vendors, and then we negotiate and ultimately approve a contract. The timeline for this particular project started back in March of '28. The RFP was published. The technical proposal that we actually received was on April the 19th. And the vendors was interviewed on May 23rd. On June 18th, we received an initial scope of work and the fee schedule from that vendor. It was negotiated and a new statement of work and fee was received on June 28th. On July 9th, we presented what we had to the Administration Committee meeting. An intent to award was sent out, a memo was sent out after that meeting because it was approved to move forward to the council meeting of the 22nd. And then that brings us here to today, which is August the 12th. So in defining the need for service in FY '19, there was an internal analysis for some administration reorg in our structure, identified the need to change some of the scope with the administrator and the deputy administrator, which also included some scope with the HR director. That request did not make it through the FY '19 budget. It was brought back in the FY '20 budget for the reorganization, and it did not make it through. After some internal discussions regarding the city organization as a whole, trying to define, identify ways to improve the efficiency and also streamline our business. It was, we competitively sought professional firms to provide an organization and cultural analysis. So in doing so, we first had to write the scope. And the particular scope had several different phases. It was talked about a little bit at the last meeting, but there's much more detail for tonight. In writing the scope, there was an organizational review. We wanted this firm to be able to examine the inventory that we currently have, the structure and the functions, review the, any gaps that we have or any duplications that we have in the, how we do our services and our efficiency. Evaluate the organization, the management structure, which includes job descriptions and the staffing levels. Propose different options for the structure and the staffing. Assess the assignments and the human resources that we have to be able to perform the current duties, and then identify any of the supervisory ratios that we have with our employees. We also wrote the scope for an operational review that had to do with the workflows, the processes, assess the workplace culture, seeking any feedback from each and every employee that would be a part of a survey that would go out for the employees. Observe and identify opportunities for intergovernmental cooperation. That's cooperation between the departments, the different services that we provide. And then analyze and review the length of service with our current staff and look into succession planning for the future. So we issued the RFP, the review offers, and interviewed the vendors. That was on March 28th. Six vendors replied to the proposal. Three of the vendors were interviewed. That, the committee, when I say "we," the committee included myself from administration, Jeff Leatherman from Recreation and Parks, Jim Harner from Human Resources, and Greg Anderson from Purchasing. Plant Moran received the highest ranking proposal of all that were turned in. Some of these next few slides you're going to see, I know they're hard to see for the audience. I hope they show up decently on your screens up there, but I wanted to try to get everything, each one of these in on one particular slide instead of switching back and forth. So the statement of work, the first phase is a project initiation. I won't go through what all of them say, but you'll see the activities down the left side, what Plant Moran's role is in the middle, and then what the city's role is on the right. But as far as the activities, it's the project initiation, the project organizational structure, a collaboration center, which is really a place to put all the data that is received, where everybody can collaborate on that data, such as the SharePoint site. Develop a project charter, detailed project plans, conduct the project kickoff meeting, schedule the ongoing status meetings, and then also the monthly steering committee meetings. So after the project initiation, scope of work was negotiated, the organizational review was also negotiated in the scope of work. That's leadership interviews. And again, you'll see the role from Plant Moran and the role from the City of Roswell. Human resource interviews, comparable city questionnaires. They'll compile the information, normalize the information, meaning are there, is there key data points that we can, we can look at from different agencies? There's a department head questionnaire, department head interviews, and then ultimately a draft summary of the findings for the organizational review. The other negotiated section of the statement of work is with the cultural study. They will be doing an organizational cultural study. That study will go out to each and every employee, so they'll have an opportunity to respond, not only to specific questions, but also general questions and some written-in responses. Of course, all that would be kept confidential and then be compiled from the vendor. Then the statement of work for the project report itself. The activities of project visioning session would be facilitated by Plant Moran. The draft report would be done, and then of course, finalization and presentation of the report to you all, City Council. This is just the professional services, the fee structure that is provided by the vendor from project management all the way down to finalizing and presenting the report, which would be all onsite for a total cost for this contracted service of $100,000. As we go through and award a contract, this is exactly how we work the award. We prepare the contract. The contract reflects the requirements in the RFP, reflects the requirements in the scope of work that we write, reflect requirements in the statement of work, which contractor writes and we negotiate, and then reflects the requirements in the fee that was offered by the contractor. So the request tonight is for approval for the city administrator, mayor, mayor and/or city administrator to sign a contract with Plant Moran for an organizational and cultural analysis for the City of Roswell for $100,000. And that's what I have for my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Does council have any questions? Yes, Councilmember Tizer.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Fisher, for your more detailed explanation. I actually had a chance to read through the whole process document that you put together, which was very helpful. I'm going to be supportive of your review. There are some things in here that are very interesting that in my discussion with you earlier today, you told me hadn't been done, at least in as long as you've been here, which is
Ten years.
Ten years. So these are some things that I remember doing earlier in my career. Process maps that show what, what a particular process that city employees might do are. And these things haven't been done in that kind of long time, that kind of timeframe. Our city has grown pretty dramatically. I think this is one of those best practices that we ought to do. You know, if it's not every 10 years, it's some period of time. There are, you know, I think one of the concerns last time around was that this would be used to justify bringing in more people. And typically, when you do these, you're looking for efficiencies as to how you can grow without, without adding people or figuring out how to reorganize in ways that perhaps you hadn't thought of. And they give some examples of that in here, which I thought were very interesting, where department lines sort of change from what, what might be traditional. In the example they gave with the parish report. So there's an example of what a report would look like. This does get brought back and presented to mayor and council, which I hadn't heard the last time you discussed it. So I'll be supportive of it. I think it's, if it's about time we, we did this sort of thing for the city.
Thank you, Councilmember. Additional comments, questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Is there anyone in the, oh, Councilmember Palermo?
Thank you, Mayor Henry. Mr. Fisher, thank you for, you definitely met the request of this council from the last meeting and provided a lot of thorough information. So thank you for completely following up, and very quickly as well. So thank you for all that detail. So now with that, I still, I still do have the same position that I had last time when this, when this council deferred it. And, and I want to get into a little more background on, on why. And, and you'll hear, you'll hear a lot of similar points that I'll bring up in our next item regarding the millage rate, that, that basically the city has priorities and has limited money. And I do not want to be increasing the taxes on our residents, and I want to make sure they're really getting the most efficient bang for their buck. And, and with it, you know, the fact that this history comes about, that there was a request to really increase, increase costs through, through some different structures, and that was something that this council voted down. And then in everything we've seen, the next step then was to request this $100,000 spent for this, for this study. And basically, I certainly see there can be benefits of, of studies, but I think there's bigger priorities for the big people of Roswell. I think, I think the people of Roswell would absolutely trust that, that this council has the right team in place to be able to analyze and go through some of this and find some efficiencies. But more importantly, as we look at what are some needs for the people of Roswell, for approximately $9,000, there could be another Bike Roswell event, Roswell Moves in downtown Roswell. It's where they shut down all of Canton Street. It was a great event. Our businesses did great. Our residents were very proud. It was a fun event for all. That's $9,000. This council has decided we don't have money for our residents and our businesses to enjoy something like, like that. Another thing is, bottom line, as we hear from so many residents, and I completely agree, we have a lot of roads that need to be repaved, and we don't have enough money to fully repave them. We've got sidewalks all over the city that we need to, we need to really close some holes, close some, close some, some gaps, and really put in more sidewalks. That's something we don't have enough money to do. to do. What I want to discuss, and I could go down, I could get on the list for many other things, at the end of the day, what I want to make sure tax dollars are being spent on are things that give a clear and direct benefit to Roswell residents. Another study, and specifically a study on City Hall and the culture, does not give a clear and direct benefit over this. We spent hours today, and we're going to spend hours in a couple weeks at a work session on one of the most important things we have going on, which is regarding Big Creek Parkway and Holcomb Bridge Road and that exchange. This is, we have an opportunity that comes around once in many decades to really provide some solid, significant improvement to traffic, and we do not have enough money to do exactly the way we want to do it. So again, the $100,000 isn't going to close that gap, but what I'm hoping is to change really the philosophy, and get it so that we are more focused on making sure what we are spending is providing that direct and clear benefit, because just as this $100,000 is not the most effective use of the money, there's other opportunities as well, and that's what I'll certainly advocate for tonight.
Thank you, councilmember Palermo. Yes, councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mr. Fisher, thank you so much, especially for providing the request for proposals that we didn't have the last meeting with us. This was, one of the point that we made was, there was not very clear the scope of work and deliverable, so now it is, thanks again for providing this information. But, you know, kind of, councilmember Palermo, we have limited resources in the city, so we have to maximize the impact of these resources, limited resources. So I personally don't see the urgency of spending $100,000, as well as I don't see the high impact for taxpayers on this $100,000 expense. So, but, what I do see, and I have a different approach here, to probably accomplish the same or very similar, or at least something that give us in the short term, really good input, is that we have a lot of capable and experienced heads of departments, which we're all very proud of them, so they are, you know, professionals, very capable and experienced, that I personally have, you know, I'm confident that the heads of department to make reasonable recommendations to this mayor and council on how to operate better every single department in terms of operational and organizational. So, again, my approach to accomplish at least the key points, or the most important issues of every department, heads of department knows about, they know how they can operate better. They know, you know, and we talk about the culture, also, we have a full HR department, very capable to conduct a culture survey in the City of Roswell, so, and in a confidential way, so employees can really give us all the feedback without any concern about privacy. So, you know, I'm not saying that we shouldn't do the study, my approach is different, I think we should do it, but internally, you know, led by our city administrator and all the very capable head of department, very experienced on every single department. So, this is how I will suggest to do the organizational, operational, and cultural study. So, and also, you know, it was really good that you shared with us the request for proposals, because I went, you know, through one by one, all the departments that will contemplate this study, and, you know, came to my attention, like, for example, for the police department, we just have recently, a good study came back analyzing the police department, so then...
And I didn't make that clear when I spoke with councilmembers Zapata earlier, that police study will be incorporated, so we don't have to spend a lot of time and or money with the police part, because we have just done a fairly detailed survey there. So in the RFP, you probably saw in there that list of departments, that's just showing all of our departments, but of course, that one will be incorporated into the study.
Great, thanks. So then I see other departments that, you know, like fire, where chief has his command in place all full-time, and then he has his really good people, that they are part-time serving the City of Roswell. So I really, you know, I went department by department, and I was thinking about, did I ever hear about any, you know, suggestion or need, or complaint of, you know, can we do something better, and recommendation to mayor and council? So, so again, you know, I will suggest to do internally, and I will even go farther, because I know that it's going to take extra work for the heads of department, and they say, well, Marcelo, what are you talking about, you're going to give us more extra work? And I said, that's fine, you know, but you know what? I'm willing to compensate you, somehow, whatever is legal and in government, how you compensate, on the private sector, you might call bonuses, for achieving certain extra goals put in throughout the year, I will say compensation, some sort of compensation to the heads of department, so they can work with each individual department and make a recommendation to city administration, city administrator, sorry, who can make a recommendation to mayor and council. So that would be my approach. I think it's important to do it, we haven't do it for 10 years, I think it's time to do it, but my approach is different, and I believe that, you know, nobody knows better internally what could be better than, you know, their own department.
Thank you, councilmember Zapata. I would like to add a couple of things, because I've got a little bit of institutional history here. About 15 years ago, we did a similar study, and at the time, we had grown exponentially, and we had a very siloed approach to the way we did business here in Roswell, and our departments were somewhat isolated from each other. We brought in some consultants, basically, they looked at how we were functioning as a city, they had recommendations at the time. For example, Transportation and Public Works was one department, their suggestion was to split those into two departments. Then also, there was the issue with our land inspectors and comm dev and how they work with our other departments, so there was a lot of shifting going on, and that shifting created, actually created savings within the city. And that's where I think an outside consultant comes in that's just very valuable. I also agree that, you know, we've got a lot of competing dollars in the city, and, you know, we're looking at every dollar that we spend, we just had a work session talking about transportation projects, that we're not certain how we're going to fund them yet. So I can see both sides of the coin, but I will say that I have seen these types of studies work very, very well. Also with, you know, you mentioned the fire department, with that issue, you know, we've got a fire chief that is requesting that we eventually take this department full-time. What does that mean? How does that impact the city? How do we deal with that? Can that be phased in? But I think that there are a lot of opportunities for savings, and I think it's worthwhile to look at that, because I would surely anticipate savings coming out of this, and the possibility of combining job descriptions, or splitting them, or whatever the case may be, just to provide more efficiency, and I think that's the way we serve our citizens of Roswell, is through an efficient government as well. Councilmember Judy.
Thank you, Mayor, for your comments, I agree. You know, looking at this, you're looking at a company that's coming in from the outside that's been around since 1924, did over $626 million in revenue last year, has over 3,000 employees, one of the top 20 places by Fortune to Work in the country. You know, over the past few years, we have a new finance director, we have a new transportation director, we have a new parks director, we have a new police chief, we have a new city administrator, we have a new mayor, and we have four new council members, and we're, you know, getting ready to be in election year. So if there was ever a time to look at our structure, it would be now, and an outside independent source to come in and do that, and again, look at our efficiency, something when reading through this, the three points that hit me, the culture assessment obviously is very important to what we're, are as a city, who we are, what people inside this building feel each day as they come to work. You want happy people working here, and you want us to be able to have a productive work environment. The process mapping that Councilman Tyser spoke about earlier is invaluable, and the alignment of services that the mayor just spoke about is where we could possibly save money in the long run. Again, I support this wholeheartedly, moving forward to, again, we could go through lists and lists of where we could save money and play politics with, we've got this, and we've got that, and we've got millage rates, and, you know, we're going to spend on this fire truck, or that, I mean, we could do that all day long, but this $100,000 I think is well spent. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes, I would just also like to add my support, and as we discussed the last time we met, the City of Roswell is one of the largest employers in the city, and reaches and touches most all of the citizens in one way, shape, or form on a weekly basis. So I think having an objective outside look and analysis of how we operate is bound to result in some efficiency improvements, and help us improve how we serve our citizens, and I would expect to see lots of direct and clear benefits coming out of this study. So thank you again for the work in putting the proposal together.
Additional comments, questions from council? Yes, councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. So, you know, just my experience, we have been the last three and a half years, you know, talking to heads of department and other employees, and listen to them of suggestion recommendations, you know, I heard once on finance department that they needed for the budget, have a latest software for that, and I pushed for that, because I understood that that was important for finance department that I'm a liaison to. It was important for them to come with this software to minimize errors, maximize the time, and produce better reports out of the, during the budget season. So, you know, my experience have been talking to, you know, staff members, and ask them, you know, how can you do your job better? What kind of tools do you need to do better, to be more efficient? And I get ideas, and I get ideas, and then me, as a council member, I push this initiative forward based on recommendation made by staff. So you have to just listen, I mean, listening to stuff, you learn a lot, and then you can move forward this initiative, especially as a liaison, moving forward initiative from different departments. So really, I am convinced of how capable and experienced, you know, everybody in Roswell, and everybody is looking to do better the job, and more efficient, and come with ideas, and that is fantastic, this show initiative from all staff member, and we have to encourage this, we have to encourage more initiative and engagement to see how can they do the job better, how can the city provide better service, how can eventually, if this lead to savings, even better, but at least, how can we serve better the residents and the community? So again, I think it's important to do the study, but I have a different approach of how to do the study.
Thank you, councilmember Zapata. Additional questions, comments from council? Is there anyone in the public that would like to come forward and speak? Seeing no one approach, any final comments before I call for a motion? Yes, councilmember Palermo.
Thank you. At the end of the day, this council, we make the spending decisions, and when we choose to spend money on one thing and not another, that is a decision being made, and again, I do not see this as a priority. I certainly support councilmember Zapata's way of looking at it, the opportunity to save $100,000, and really make some good progress of, as I look through that checklist and list of tasks, there's a lot of things that our staff could do, and perhaps, once they get the ball rolling, once they get that started, we're able to narrow the scope, reduce the cost, save taxpayers' money, and then actually spend that savings on things that residents actually have a clear and direct benefit from. So that's what I'll certainly support, and I hope the council will have the patience to give staff the opportunity to make a start with this, and again, we still get to the same place at the end.
Thank you, councilmember Palermo. Additional comments from council? Councilmember Zapata, do you have a motion?
Yes, Mayor. You know, I hope that my fellow councilmember will support this, you know, have my doubts based on the comments, but yes, my motion is to deny item number three of today's agenda.
A motion to deny by councilmember Zapata, is there a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Palermo, although some favor, please raise your hands, and it is councilmember Zapata and councilmember Palermo, although opposed. Councilmember Tyser, councilmember Wilson, and councilmember Judy, the motion fails. Councilmember Zapata, would you like to make a second motion, or would you like to defer to another councilmember?
Yeah, I'm not going to make another motion.
Okay, thank you, councilmember Zapata. Is there, yes, councilmember Judy.
Motion to approve.
Councilmember Judy has made a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Tyser and councilmember Wilson, although some favor, please raise your hands, it's Tyser, Wilson, and Judy, although opposed, councilmember Zapata, and councilmember Palermo. And we will go back to you, councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. So, let's move now to item number four of the agenda today. Approval of an ordinance to adopt a millage rate of 4.955 for full year 2020, this is the second reading.
Mr. Davidson.
Thank you, this is an ordinance to adopt the millage rate. Now therefore, the mayor and council of the City of Roswell wish to establish a millage rate of 4.955. The millage rate has a component of 4.705 mils for the general fund, operating and capital improvement budget, and a component of 0.25 mils for servicing bonded indebtedness. If approved, this will be the second reading.
Good evening, mayor and council, here for the second reading of our millage rate for FY 2020. Have a brief presentation for you, just to give you some background on where we're at. The FY 2020 budget was adopted by the mayor and council back on May 28th. That budget was based upon an estimated tax digest, as we didn't have final numbers or any, actually preliminary numbers from Fulton County at the time, but it was based on an estimated millage rate of 4.955 mils. The preliminary property tax digest was received from Fulton County back on June 25th. We brought the first reading of the millage rate to you on July 22nd, and that was approved at that time. Some other information about just where we've been over the last couple of years regarding our property tax digest in Fulton County, as you might remember, in 2017, the Fulton County Board of Commissioners froze the digest, and that was eventually rejected by the state. In 2018, the number of appeals countywide kept the digest from being able to be submitted to the state. Also, in that year, the voters enacted a floating homestead exemption for a lot of the North Fulton cities, and then our current year, 2019, that new floating homestead exemption takes effect, and the digest from 2017 and 2018, that dispute between the county and the state has been resolved. Just to give you an update on our 2019 property tax digest, we did receive word last week from Fulton County that they were able to secure a temporary collection order, so we have received our property tax digest that we can use to bill as of today, and so upon approval of the millage rate, we would be able to move forward with sending out those bills for property taxes. Just to give you a kind of a brief overview of what our gross digest looks like for 2019, as you can see, year over year, our total property tax digest in the City of Roswell has grown by $462 million, or about 8.2%. Of that increase, a little over half is related to new growth, meaning new development, new businesses moving into Roswell. Roswell does have several homestead exemptions currently in place, we have an exemption of $2,000 for those age 65 and over, $20,000 for those age 65 and over with a combined, adjusted gross income of $40,000 or less, a disabled veteran exemption, which is actually, this is what it was last year, but it's actually increased to the 80, around $80,000 for the upcoming year. And as I mentioned before, we do have the new floating homestead exemption that will be going into effect this year. So as you can see through these exemptions, this brings tax savings to our residents of about $3.3 million, which averages to about $117 per household. So when you factor in this new property tax digest, you can see that we actually are collecting less than we collected last year, and we anticipated this with the implementation of the new floating homestead exemption. This slide also looks a little different, as you might notice, from our previous meeting, and that is because as of today... And that is because, as of today, we did receive appeal information from Fulton County, and I'll get into that in just a moment. But the effect of that has basically decreased the revenues that we are estimating to receive in 2020, FY 2020. So here, if you compare FY 19 to FY 2020, you can see that we are anticipating to collect about $720,000 less than we did the prior year. That's about a 2.7% decrease. When you compare our new estimate to what we budgeted for FY 2020, you can see this number has changed also because we're taking into account the new appeal information that we received today. So for FY 2020, the approved budget, that was approved back in May, we budgeted to receive about $25.5 million. We're currently estimating about a little over $26 million, which is a positive variance of about half a million dollars compared to what we budgeted for the approved budget. About a 2% difference. Also, just to remind you, the reason for this difference, obviously, the residential and commercial property values were, that growth in those areas were greater than we anticipated. Additionally, there are still things, several things that we are unknown, meaning our appeals from 2018, and I'll get into that in our next slide. So this is last year's appeals. And so as you can see, the total appeals just in the city of Roswell were almost 3,000. To date, or as of July 22nd, 2019, about half of those appeals have been resolved. This table gives you sort of the tally of what's happened with those values. Most of those appeals have resulted in no change in value. About half of them were lowered. Of the appeals that resulted in a value change, on average, the value has decreased by about 18.2%. And as I mentioned, we did receive appeal information today from Fulton County. So I can tell you that in the city of Roswell, there are about 1,400 appeals, which is about half as many as we had last year. But the dollar value of that is about $136 million in assessed value. And it's not that far off from our assessed value, the value of our appeals last year, which was about $165 million. And that's mainly due to this particular year, there were quite a few commercial appeals, which of course are larger in value. So when it comes to the millage rate, there is currently no change proposed for FY 2020. You can see our millage rate is comprised of two components. Our maintenance and operations rate, which is at 4.705, and our debt service portion, which goes to support our general obligation bonds that are approved by voters, is at 0.25 mils for a combined millage rate of 4.955 mils. We are also required by the state to calculate what is called a rollback rate, and this is intended to basically eliminate the effects of inflationary increases. And so as you can see here, this is kind of different than it is in typical years, the rollback millage rate is actually higher than the rate that we are proposing, meaning that basically it's illustrating the point that we are collecting less property tax revenues than we did in the prior year. So it's about 6.6% lower than the rollback rate. Just to give you an example of how that looks on the average Roswell home, if we compare year over year, you can see that the average home value in Roswell, this particular one, $374,000 in the prior year, has increased to $383,000. Once you factor in the floating homestead exemption for this particular average Roswell home, you can see that the tax bill decreases by almost $200 for this particular house of about 27%. Obviously, this is just one isolated example, and it varies based upon the actual value of the home. So just to summarize, overall, our property tax digest has increased by 8%. New and existing homestead exemptions have reduced the digest value by about $670 million, or about 15%. In regards to our revenues for our current fiscal year FY 2020, they are less than FY 2019, which we anticipated, but they are higher than we anticipated for the 2020 approved budget. Half of our appeals from the prior year are still unresolved, and so any resolution of those appeals will affect us in our current fiscal year FY 2020. And of course, as I mentioned, we do now have the impact factored in for our 2019 appeals. We are recommending to leave the millage rate unchanged at 4.955 mils. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Luckett. Yes, Councilmember Tyser.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Luckett, could you go back to page eight for just a second? Slide eight. Let me make sure that I understand what's on slide eight. What's our total budget, maintenance and operating, roughly?
Property tax revenues?
Yes, sir.
Yes. For FY 2020, it is $25.5 million.
I'm sorry. Let me ask the question again. Our total budgeted expenses for
The general fund.
Operating expenses in the general fund and capital for the genuine fund, roughly?
$80 million.
Okay. I think this is saying that you're going to bring this in within $510,000, which is a pretty tight runway to bring it in on. So I'm going to recommend that we don't, that we leave the millage rate where it's at, based on that runway. Can you give me an idea of what the total amount of unresolved 2019 appeals might come to if the same percentage is sort of held true?
Well, if the appeals, as they are today, basically, we have factored in the appeals for 2019 at where they're, where we can bill. And so we're looking at, typically, it's about 85% of the assessed value. So if those appeals result in no change, then we would stay at about half a million-dollar surplus. If the values end up going down, which, as I mentioned, a lot of those values or appeals were on the commercial side, that would further reduce that surplus that we see there.
Thank you.
Additional questions from council? Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. So I am not in support of this millage rate as we discussed in the prior item. I feel the city does too much spending that doesn't provide a clear and direct benefit to Roswell residents. It makes me think of a quote I saw from President Reagan. Government does not tax to get the money it needs. Government always finds a need for the money it gets. And I feel that's a situation where we're putting ourselves in, in the sense that there's constantly mid-year budget items, or actually, not even at the mid-year. There's always just budget adjustments that come throughout the year, and there's always the money for it. So whether it's the $100,000 that's being done for a cultural and organizational study within City Hall, or many other things, it's, the bottom line is, I really feel the city needs to go back to the drawing board, and I think there's a lot of opportunity to either decrease some of the spending that doesn't provide a clear and direct benefit to residents, or provide more of a focus on really allocating the spending to what residents are actually saying they need and truly do need.
Councilmember Judy.
Clear and direct benefit to citizens. It's hard to define, I think. You know, there's a lot of things that are clear and direct benefit to citizens that you might see, that I might not see, that somebody else might see. So it probably after the appeals come in, we're going to have less than $500,000 in the coffer, if we're lucky. There's a lot of things, emergencies, different situations that could come up that could cause us to be in real trouble. I think that saying that we are spending stuff frivolously casts a doubt on this government and the people on it, and I don't quite appreciate it, and so I support this millage rate going forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Judy. Yes, Councilmember Tyser.
Thank you. One thing, Ryan, I forgot to ask you, if you could, can you give us an idea of where our 4.955 stands in relation to the communities around us?
We are pretty much in the middle, actually. There are a few cities that are higher in terms of the MNO rate, a few cities that are lower.
Thank you.
Additional comments, questions from council? Seeing no hands up? Is there anyone in the public that would like to come forward and speak? Quiet crowd tonight. Okay, Councilmember Zapata, do you have a motion?
So, you know, I believe on the budget approved by some member of this council, there are places that, you know, you can find to, you know, save taxpayers' money. And then again, with this new presentation, we still have $250,000 more on reserve compared with last year budget, so which was $700,000 last year. Now we roll $450,000 that was not used last year for the same purpose, then we come to about $950,000 reserve. So if you take in consideration that we estimated only $700,000 last year, then we are still $250,000 extra reserve that then is going to roll to the general fund. And then from the general fund, I don't know, can go anywhere that is possible to legally and possible to invest from there. But again, the point is like, you know, propose where the money will go, and then the committee will be supporting. But if you just roll it to general fund, the $450,000 from last year, then for me, from my perspective, you know, I would prefer to roll it and make it more transparent, that this money was not used for this purpose, budgeted last year, now it's moving, rolling for the next year for the same purpose. So then the next year, you have to ask for less money to create a reserve and a buffer there for the need on this case of the unresolved appeals. So again, there is places to find, like in this case, and then the previous item that we voted on, the $100,000. So my motion will be a different that is in here. So my motion will be to approval of the ordinance to adopt a millage rate of 4.825, 24, which is 4.574 for the general fund maintenance and operations, and 0.25 for general obligation debt, for a total of 4.824 for full year 2020. That is my motion.
We've got a motion by Councilmember Zapata. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Palermo. And I apologize to council, I had intended on making a statement, so I'll do it now. And if you all wish to make an additional statement before I take a vote, I will call on you. You know, one of the things, let me just say this, I'm cheap. And one of the things that I love about this government is it's efficient and it's lean. And I can honestly look at the citizens of Roswell and tell you that we are not wasting your money. Now, let me go on to say as well that we are a republic by representative, that's our form of government in the United States, and we, as council members, are elected to make decisions on behalf of the citizens of Roswell. I believe that that is our duty, those decisions we need to make, and we need to make them in good faith effort. We can't ask the citizens of Roswell to know every single bit about how this city functions and how our budget is built. That's our job. And so I consider it my duty to make those decisions on behalf of the citizens. Of course, if the citizens don't like my decisions, they won't reelect me, and that's the beauty of our form of government. So I would like to say to you, you know, we just sat in a work session talking about millions of dollars we need in capital projects. And then we look at this and we say, we don't really need the money because we're bloated. Well, I would disagree with that, and I don't think I'm going to have a chance to vote, but if I did, I would vote against the motion. Is there anyone else that would like? Yes, Councilmember Palermo.
If this budget was going towards capital projects, if it was going towards things that have clear and direct benefits to residents, then I'd be supporting the 4.955 millage rate. The problem is, it doesn't, and so I want to do one of two things. I either want to spend the taxes on benefits to the people of Roswell, or I want to give that money back to the people of Roswell.
Since you opened back up the floor, there was a misconception thrown out there that the money runs back into the general fund, and then we don't know where it goes. Well, every dollar spent comes to this council to then be approved in a budget and to be approved for projects. So being on the council, we do know where it goes.
Councilmember Zapata.
Yes. Well, we don't know where it goes, it's in advance. That is my point. Sorry if I didn't miss, you misunderstood me. What I say is in advance, we don't know where it is. And I'm, as a fiduciary responsibility, I need to know in advance where the taxpayers' money will go, not after the fact. So again, you know, have to be know in advance. I know with, you know, our finance department is doing a great job accounting for every penny spent in the city, no doubt about the finance department. What my point is, like, to know in advance. So if we are asking taxpayers' money for a specific purpose, and then goes to the general fund to do something else that was not approved originally for, that is my point. The point is, like, to know in advance where the money will go, not afterward. So not rolling the previous year's surplus, for me, is not right. It's not right. So again, we know exactly where every penny goes, but what I'm asking is to know in advance where the surplus will go, not afterward. That is my point.
Thank you, Councilmember Zapata. Mr. Palmer, if you would correct me if I'm wrong, but any expenditure over $25,000 is seen and voted on by this council prior to the expenditure. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. And under certain circumstances, I think some things have to come to the council, but I'll defer to Ryan to make some comments on that.
Thank you.
The answer is yes, when it comes to professional services, as part of our purchasing ordinance, that anything over $25,000 has to be approved by the mayor and council. When it comes to goods or just regular services, that threshold is $75,000. So those are the two thresholds that we operate under in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Luckett. Yes, Councilmember Wilsey.
Yes, I would just like to comment, and I know many of you are here over the past few months when we'd gone through a very precise and lengthy budgeting process in which all the department heads were asked to make some cuts and some sacrifices. And, you know, council came, and there were several things that we went back and forth on, making some choices. And there are also millions of dollars of unfunded needs, being, you know, road resurfacing and sidewalks. So, you know, the idea that any money is being spent frivolously, I, you know, I don't think is accurate. You know, I do think, you know, opportunities and expenses come up during the year. So, you know, for that reason, I do think we're running very lean, and we have a very lean budget this year, and I support the millage rate as it's being proposed by staff.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilmember Zapata. We've got a second by Councilmember Palermo. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Councilmember Zapata and Councilmember Palermo. All those opposed, please raise your hands. Councilmember Tyser, Wilsey, and Judy. Is there a new motion on the floor?
Thank you, Mayor. As much as I always would like to reduce taxes, and as I said the last meeting, we have to do the responsible thing. We don't know what the numbers are going to look like for these other two items that are being discussed. We've done a lengthy budget process, and therefore, I move that we set the millage rate at 4.955 mils.
We have a motion by Councilmember Tyser. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Judy. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Tyser, Wilsey, and Judy, affirmative. Those opposed? Councilmembers Zapata and Palermo. The motion carries. The next items on the agenda are Community Development Department, Councilmember Palermo. The next items on the agenda are Community Development Department, Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. Item number five, RZ 2019-2082-10910, Woodstock Road, request to rezone from RS 30, Single Family Estate, to RS 18, Single Family Suburban, for the construction of three single-family homes. Ms. Diebel?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is RZ 2019-2082, located at 1019 Woodstock Road. The applicant's requesting a rezoning from RS 30 to RS 18 in order to create two additional single-family home lots. Currently, there is one single-family home on the existing property. The timeline for this was a submittal in May of this year, neighborhood meeting held on June 13th, planning commission meeting held on July 16th, and we are here this evening on the 12th of August. Here's an aerial view of the property. Property is currently zoned RS 30. On either side of it and to the rear is zoned Civic. Across the street is RS 18, Single Family Residential. That's the yellow color. Here's the proposed site plan. The existing house is in the rear of the property. Lots one and lots two are the new proposed lots that the applicant is looking to develop. The planning commission recommended approval of the zoning with one condition, that the proposal shall not include the parcel to the north of the proposed three lots. Staff recommended approval with three conditions. The proposal shall not include the parcel north of the proposed three lots. Should the existing home not be preserved, the site shall be redesigned to be more in keeping with the intent of the lot with provisions in the code, as approved by the planning and zoning director. And the sidewalk along Woodstock Road must be constructed at the eight-foot width. To give you an understanding of what condition number one is, the parcel to the north is a church. That property is not included on the survey, but we just wanted to make that clear regarding the approval of the rezoning. Do you have any questions for staff?
Does council have any questions? Councilmember Palermo?
Thank you, Mayor Henry. Ms. Diebel, could you walk this council through the third condition, which dealt with, I'm sorry, the second condition, the existing home not be preserved?
So, if for some reason, lot number three isn't as it is, the lot width requirements under RS 18 are 100 feet in width. So they meet the requirement currently. However, if you can take a look at that, it's hard to show you here, but lot number three, because it exists, kind of design is a little bit different than our normal standard, like rectangle-shaped lots. So we think a new design should be done if lot number three, if the single-family home that's existing comes down. That's the reasoning behind that condition.
Thank you.
Additional questions from council? Would the applicant like to come forward and speak?
Thank you. My name is Robert Meyer. This property is owned by a company called Red State, LST. There are two members of the LLC, it's Louisiana LLC. My daughter lives right down the street with my grandchildren, Deveraux Chase. My wife and I would like to remodel the house and live there, spend more time there. The two lots in the front help the economics of remodeling the house in the back, and it's comparable to other lots in the area. We have asked for no variances, although it's pretty stringent not doing so. Planning department asked, not asked, but said that we had to give 50 feet setback off of Woodstock Road and 50 feet from the back property lines of the new lots in the front to the front of the existing house. It was never fully justified to us that Woodstock Road required a 50-foot setback, but rather 40 feet, but we went along with it. The property was there. Woodstock Road is listed on transportation documentation as a minor ancillary. 50 feet is a major thoroughfare, and that reconciliation between the two has never been validated to me. But we've given the 50 feet. We've also given almost 6,000 feet of land, on average, for a funneled-shaped driveway, giving 100 feet on Woodstock Road to preserve the greenery that the city would like to have to support the house in the back, which would have been called a flag lot. We've met that requirement. We now have a school ripping down all the trees on our left property line and our rear property line. So we request that the RS 18 zoning, as compared to the surrounding area with no variances, be granted. The eight-foot sidewalk is another matter. It's difficult to justify the cost of an eight-foot sidewalk when there's a perfectly good five-foot sidewalk on both sides of Woodstock Road, in addition to the bike path on the Woodstock Road, a very ample avenue, I believe, to, as the staff recommended, tear up the sidewalk and put an eight-foot sidewalk, which would cost about $6,000 in concrete and probably total about, I would guess, $17,000 to $20,000 to make a perfectly good sidewalk three feet wider. So that's my comment on that. Other than that, we've met all the requirements of the staff. The property in the north is not being considered for these lot sizes. We do own the property. There are some encroachments on the property, but we're not using that property at all for this three-lot subdivision. So I think we've met all the requirements of the staff, and we ask for approval.
Thank you, sir. Does council have any questions for the applicant? Yes, Councilmember Judy.
So just to clarify, the staff's conditions that they gave us today, you agree with?
Well, there's two sets of, the commission recommended that to not be moved forward. The parcel to the north, no problem. The lot, yeah, sure. I'm not sure exactly what number two would mean if the house was taken down, the intent is to remodel the house. Someone in planning commission said, well, you know, sometimes you can find that it's infestated with termites or something like that. I don't think that's the case. I guess it's possible. I don't think that's the case. I don't know, it's pretty, it's the best of the three lots. As far as square footage, it's 32,000 square feet, I believe, and this is RS 18. So you're asking for RS 18,000, and we're giving you 31,000 on the back lot. I don't quite understand that. It's fine. Our intent is to remodel the house. So I'm not sure how you would redo that back section unless you went back and said, instead of RS 18, it's back to RS 30. I'm not sure how it would work. The sidewalk, if we have to put eight-foot sidewalk, nobody else has done it. Maybe the school's going to do it. Some sidewalks coming into Canton Street, some properties don't even have sidewalk at all. So I guess we would do that if we had to. I think it's a form of double taxation to some extent. I pay property taxes. Seems like that would be out of either the school's budget or the city's budget, but if we had to do it, we'd do it.
Thank you.
I think it would be when the houses would be built on the front lots, which may not be ourselves. And if we had to get an occupancy permit for the 100 feet that we've allowed to support the house in the back, I guess we would do that immediately, once the house needed to be occupied. So you would have 100 feet of eight-foot sidewalk from five-foot sidewalks. I don't know exactly how logistics works. I was told that occupancy, so if a builder built two other houses on the front, I guess he would be responsible for the eight-foot sidewalk in front of those houses.
Ms. Diebel, would you mind?
Sure. Yes, correct. If a builder comes in to build lots one and two, they are the ones responsible to put in the eight-foot sidewalk. And to answer one other question, under our code, the front setback is 50 feet, the rear setback is actually 35, that's shown on the plan. So it's not a 50-foot rear, it's a 50-foot front and a 35-foot rear, to clarify that, per the RS 18 zoning. And that is what's shown on his plan. But per the requirements, when a building permit comes in for lots one and two, that is the time that the developer would build the sidewalk.
Thank you, Ms. Diebel. Additional questions from council? Seeing no hands up, is there any, you can have a seat, sir, thank you. Is there anyone in the public that, yes, ma'am, please come forward?
Russell, Roswell resident. Regarding this sidewalk, I don't know this man, I know that road. If there is an existing five-foot sidewalk and it was constructed when that old house that he wants to remodel is there, it would seem to me that he's grandfathered in and he doesn't have to do a thing to that sidewalk, based on the house that was constructed. And I've seen it happen around the city. The intent of the sidewalk thing is to make it walkable. We know how, my middle name is sidewalks, right? It would seem to me that you're creating a monster again, to have somebody dig up a five-foot sidewalk to put in an eight-foot sidewalk, even if it's the builder. Because if that lot was completely like it is, when that house was built and five-foot sidewalks were put in, he's grandfathered in and shouldn't be required to build another sidewalk. You can't keep doing that to people that have been around for a long time. Just my observation. It happened in my neighborhood where you tried to put in two new houses and insist they put in sidewalks that connected to nothing, because we have no sidewalks in my neighborhood. And in fact, I was correct.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that, yes, ma'am, please come forward?
Sally McKenzie, 47 Goulding Place. Just a question regarding number three, the requirement to build the eight-foot sidewalks. I understand that this is on the Roswell loop that's in our transportation plan for connectivity and bike path, wider bike trails and wider sidewalks and whatnot. And so that's the plan. But I do know there are other constructions, there's other construction going on along the loop, and I haven't noted that they are required to widen their sidewalks. One is 1144 Canton Street. That's the really big house being constructed right now on, I guess if you're going north, it's on the left, just kind of a little bit past Woodstock and Canton Street. They're not required to widen their sidewalks, and it's on the loops, on the same loop. Also, in trying to understand the requirements, and I dug and dug, and I'm not sure I got an answer, maybe I did, I asked a lot of questions, it says that the builder is required to plat for the sidewalk. I could never find where he was required to actually build it himself. But if he, if this gentleman at this location is required to widen the sidewalk, I would assume that everyone on the loop who is developing is required to widen the sidewalk? And I'm not seeing that it's happening. So I just want, would personally like some clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question for Ms. Diebel, if you would, please. Is the requirement, this gentleman is going to build, he referred to it as a subdivision, it's three houses, remodel one, build two. Are the requirements different for the sidewalk than if he just purchased the piece of property and remodeled the existing home?
Depends on how much he remodeled. If, based on the new sidewalk ordinance, if a resident adds an addition of 1,000 square feet, they're required to update their sidewalk if they do not have one. So, and that policy went into effect, I believe, in 17. So every resident who comes in to pull a permit, if they're at 1,000 square feet or more, then they have to meet the new sidewalk requirements. And this property is located on the loop, which means the eight-foot requirement. And transportation wants to answer and discuss the sidewalk also.
Thank you. Mr. Del Ros, would you please come forward and speak?
Good evening, Mayor. I was going to speak after the public comment. I'll go ahead and address you quickly. Two primary reasons for transportation requesting this eight-foot sidewalk. First one, as said before, we think this is a very important connection for bike-ped access for residents along Jones Road and residents in Deveraux Downs and areas to the north of this property on Woodstock, to use this trail to access Roswell Park. Second, we are asking for this eight-foot connection because this parcel is immediately adjacent to the new middle school site, which has already agreed to construct an eight-foot path along their entire frontage.
Thank you, Mr. Del Ros. Yes, ma'am, please come forward.
There's an area on Thomas Road, I'm sorry, Sue Dupart, 500 Shadowwood Court.
Thank you.
I fell out a card. There is a sidewalk on Thomas Road after the new elementary school got built on Alfred Highway, and that was constructed by the Board of Ed, and it ended. And that school holds special needs preschool, which I once saw a child walking with his father to elementary school in the summer in the road, because they don't have a sidewalk on Lake Charles Place continuing. So we're not always following through, you know, with what schools do in other areas. And I can, I express concern of the city because it's a safety hazard. Special needs preschool children can have auditory processing disorders, and when they're walking on the street instead of a sidewalk, they might lunge out and run into the road when they see something. And so we have to be consistent with schools and in other areas of the city, or that's not safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to, yes, sir?
Bruno Costanzo, I live at Thomas Circle. I agree with Ms. Russell's comments, and I understand transportation's concerns about wanting to have a wide sidewalk because of the school being there, but you've got to realize that it's going to go from eight-foot to five-foot, all the way down the rest of Woodstock Road. To me, it's ridiculous to make him tear up a sidewalk that's there, to put an eight-foot sidewalk that's just going to funnel back into a five-foot sidewalk. Something about this sidewalk ordinance, I'm not against sidewalks per se, but this, something needs to be looked at with this ordinance. We're constantly having to put in eight-foot sidewalks where it's going to funnel down to four, down to nothing, or to five, and it's, it just needs to be revisited, I think. And again, I agree with Janet about, we shouldn't penalize this guy for buying a piece of property and wanting to develop it. There's already a working sidewalk there. I don't see, I drive up and down that road every day. I don't see a huge crowd of citizens not being able to use the five-foot sidewalk that's there. It's good enough, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward and speak? And the applicant, I'll give you a few minutes for rebuttal, if you would like to come forward. If not, that's fine. Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion. Councilmember Palermo?
So before a motion, want to give a little clarification. So if you're familiar with this area, so right now, there may, there might not be that many people there on the sidewalks, but with, when that new middle school comes, there certainly will be. And so this, not only is this property adjacent to it, where it's, there's going to be an eight-foot sidewalk in front of the school, but then also next to this property on their side is a church. And I definitely hope that church is always there. It's incredible, if you walk by or drive by there, you'll see they have a lot of moms having a workout group there. It's really cool where moms bring their newborns. That being said, though, it is a large property, and we see a lot of change happening in Roswell. And so the last thing that I think this council would want to do is not have a vision where you end up having eight-foot at the school, eight-foot with a large, you know, potential changes there down the future, and really just looking for different opportunities to connect golf carts, connect joggers, bicycles, et cetera, which will certainly bring value to these new homes. What I'd say is, too, this property is currently zoned RS 30. RS 30 is a very reasonable and appropriate zoning for this location, just like the many others right there on Jones Road. And if there is the preference to stay at RS 30, there's certainly no need to put in the larger sidewalks. There certainly is the ability to just redo and rehab this house as is. But there is the request to move to RS 18. And as I see it with staff's recommendations, I think it is something I could support. I could support moving to RS 18. I could support moving to RS-18. Again, by no means is this body obligated to support that, but I think, I think the way the applicant's proposed it, with the combination of staff's recommendations, I think RS-18 is a, is a reasonable request.
Additional comments from council? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve with staff's three recommendations.
Motion to approve by councilmember Palermo. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Zapata. All those in favor, please raise your hands. It's Zapata, Tyser, Wilsey, Palermo, and Judy. The motion carries. Thank you.
Item number six, approval for conditional use, CU 2018-05571 for multifamily use located at 25 Hill Street. And so Ms. Diaboll, as you and I discussed, basically, basically staff's recommendation is given that this council has supported a, a study going on at, regarding the Hill Street area, that, that staff's recommendation would be to defer since that, that study has not been completed yet. And so we'd just like the opportunity with the mayor and you and the applicant to discuss that potential deferral.
Okay. So I guess we'll have to hear from the applicant as to whether or not they would like to defer this item.
Mr. Tate, would you come forward? And give us your thoughts on deferral.
Mayor Henry, members of the city council, I represent the applicant in this situation. My name is Ed Tate and I live in, live in Roswell. My law office is in Dunwoy. We've been, we've been through this process for quite some time, and I think a little more time would not hurt. There is a master plan that has, that comes up for approval with respect to the historic district in a few moments. But our application was filed prior to this approval, obviously, and we would not necessarily be bound by it. However, the applicant and the property owner are interested in making the best product possible for the city of Roswell, and one that will garner the support of not just the mayor and council, but the rest of Roswell. Therefore, we're willing to and happy to defer and be able to scrutinize the master plan for the historic district, see what we can pull out of that and change our, change our development, if in fact we can. But we have been at this for quite some time, and we'd like to see, we'd like to see this matter go forward in September, if at all possible. And if you could amend your motion to, to require that, to allow us the time to come back to you with what we can do under the master plan that is up for adoption tonight, and do that in September so that we can know whether or not, and the property owner can know whether or not we're going to fish or cut bait. So that's what we'd like to see.
Thank you, Mr. Tate. Does that give you enough direction, councilmember?
It does, it does. So Mr. Tate, I appreciate the intent that you just described and the intent from the applicant to really, as you, as you quoted, scrutinize the, the master plan and look for opportunities for this to be a great win for, for Roswell. So I, I'm definitely hopeful that that will be the case. And either way, I think it's a reasonable request around September. So for that reason, I motion to defer until September, would it be the September 9th, mayor and council meeting?
Ms. Diaboll's nodding yes.
She's nodding yes, excellent. So in that case, I'll say it more affirmative. Motion to defer until the September 9th mayor and council meeting.
We have a motion to defer. Is there a second? Yes, councilmember Judy?
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your hands, and it passes unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number seven, approval of a text amendment to the Unified Development Code to Section 5.3 Building Type Standards. This is the first reading.
Mr. Davidson?
Thank you. This is an ordinance to amend the Unified Development Code by modifying Section 5.3 Building Type Standards. Now therefore, the mayor and council of the city of Roswell, Georgia pursuant to their authority to hereby amend Section 5.3 Building Type Standards of the Unified Development Code, text of which is incorporated here and by reference, and they approve this to be the first reading.
So this is a text amendment to Article 5 to include the Cottage Court into several different building codes, building types. This was recommended by the Historic District Master Plan Committee. At the committee, it went to committee meeting, Community Development Transportation on May 29th, initiation on June 10th, it went to planning commission on July 16th, and tonight is the first reading. This is a building type, is for one and a half stories, 24 feet in height, and allows for five to nine dwelling units which surround a courtyard. The request, as I stated, came from the Master Plan Committee to have some additional housing types within the historic district. This is a proposed drawing, this is what we have in the code currently. The Cottage Court building type is only allowed in our DR Downtown Residential District. It would be included tonight, if so, by the mayor and council, in the Downtown Mixed Use District and the Downtown House District. Though staff does recommend approval of the first reading to include the Cottage Court building as a building type in the DX and the DH zoning classifications. Do you have any questions for staff?
Does council have any questions? Yes, councilmember Palermo?
Thank you, Mayor Henry. So I am supportive of including Cottage Court. I feel anywhere that townhomes are, are allowed, I feel Cottage Court should certainly be allowed. My, my one hesitation is the whole permitted versus conditional. So I think it makes sense for them, for Cottage Court to be permitted in DH, but from a DX standpoint, I feel it is something that should be conditional. And, and by being conditional, it means it has the opportunity just to come through a public process for the, for the residents to weigh in, city to weigh in, and ultimately council to make a decision. So again, the, the intent behind it, I'm 100% behind, it's just one of the, the operational details is where my hesitation is.
Thank you, councilmember Palermo. Councilmember Wilsey?
Yes, thank you, Jackie. Just one quick question. Is there an acreage or lot size minimum or maximum? And I'm not, like, not per acre, but like it can, like a project could be a minimum of two acres, maximum of 10, or, I mean, is there any project acreage restriction?
Okay, so there's a site area minimum of 22,500 square feet, a site area per unit of 4,500 square feet. You, normally, when you do a development, it's five to nine units for a development. That's what our requirement is. And then a lot area of 1,200 square feet. The courtyard area itself must be 3,000 square feet for, and 600 per, 600 square feet per unit. So you must, so let's say you have five, you might have a little bit more than 600, or actually, that would round out to 600 square feet. But if, let's say you do nine, and each one of them is required to have 600 square feet per unit, you would have 4,500 square feet for the courtyard instead of 3,000. So the, the minimum is technically a 3,000 square foot courtyard. So there are standards currently in the code for the Cottage Courts.
I guess my question is just like the maximum size of the development, the minimum or maximum size?
We don't actually have one. So if someone came in and the whole property was only an acre, the minimum size is 22,500 square feet, so that's just under, it's right around half, half an acre, because an acre is 43,560. So it's around half. That would be the minimum. So somebody could come in and do something on an acre, or more than acre. You also have to remember, just because these are the requirements here, we have sidewalks, we have parking, we have stormwater, you have engineering requirements. So you never know how many units somebody could get out of something based on the size.
In the available lots, lots are fairly small.
Lots are small, yes. These are small housing types. These aren't large developments.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, councilmember Tyser?
Thank you, Mayor. One thing I would, would like councilmember Palermo to think about, one of the things we want to do with this, I think, is to encourage it, encourage Cottage Court versus, versus townhome in the DX and in DH. If we require conditional use for both townhouse and Cottage Court, we're kind of putting them on equal footing. And my suggestion is that you don't make it conditional as a way to help encourage that over townhomes. Just something to think about.
Additional questions from council? Is there anyone in the public that would like to come forward and speak? Yes, sir, please come forward.
Marcus Mello, 203 Trace. I think Cottage Court is a great idea. Scale-wise, these houses are not big, and I think they would work very well in Roswell. The problem I see with that, and I'm on the design view board, I mean, we have seen, I think, only one in years, only one development that partially was Cottage Court. And the reason for that is that the topography could work to have the garages underground. When you don't have garages underground, the only solution is not to have garages at all. But people, in order to sell these homes, people do want the garages. I think ideally, it should be allowed the garages to be grouped together so that you don't end up with a bigger footprint for the homes. But unless this is done, I don't think Cottage Courts are going to happen at all.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, please come forward.
Speaking to small-town homes and apartments. I live on Holcomb Bridge Road. We had a very, very--
Would you please, I'm sorry, Mr. Weiss, but would you please identify yourself?
Excuse me?
Would you please identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Roger Weiss, 215 Back T Court, Horseshoe Bend subdivision. We finally got the old Target property, and it's going to be revitalized. But there's going to be a lot of apartments in there. People came up to me, I mean, fit to be tied. I thought maybe what you might consider in the future is when we have these large apartment complexes, get the developer to come in in a partnership fashion. Make a segment of those available to schoolteachers, first responders, firemen, those that have limited income. We have many people that would like to live in Roswell that serve us, but they can't afford to live here. So look at a partnership, if that's possible, with these developers to make part of that property available to those that have limited income, that work in our, in our city, they have police, fire, whatever. And that will make those apartments much more acceptable to the neighbors, because each and every time I have brought that to the attention of my neighbors, they said, "That's a good idea." We have a school teacher has to drive five miles. I was at a restaurant, and 45 minutes went by. The restaurant manager came in and said, "Roger, I'm sorry." Said, "We've had to replace our chef." And he says, "The chef that we had was driving three and a half miles or four miles to come. He got a job closer to home." So think about that, if that's possible, to do a partnership, to make these things available to our first responders, our police and our fire, and our other limited financial personnel.
Thank you, sir. And I do believe that Cottage Courts are a good opportunity for just that. Yes, ma'am, please come forward.
Good evening, mayor and council. I am Judy Muir. I live on Shag Bark Trail in Roswell, and I am currently the chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. And this was one of the things that I felt very strongly about, as we have had to review lots in the district where there are older homes in the front, there's a lot of space in the back, and the only alternative there has been for us is townhomes. And I think this would be a wonderful alternative. It would provide for some smaller homes. It would fit into the district better in these areas where we can keep the historic smaller homes where they are, and then build the Cottage Court around them in, in the appropriate manner. So I am very much in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward and speak? Seeing no one approach, councilmember Palermo, do we have a motion?
Sure. And before, before I make that motion, I'll, what I'll share is my intention is to actually motion as written, but with the clarification that I, I do still want to look at the DX a little bit. So I met with staff this morning, and, and they're working on getting me the list of, of really all the different properties. And so once I get that list in Excel, as we discussed today, that'll give me the chance to, to look at all the DX and, and perhaps come to, with, with some different recommendations on whether it should be, in my opinion, permitted or conditional. But in my motion, I motion to approve the first reading as written.
Motion to approve by councilmember Palermo. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Tyser?
Actually, I just have--
Councilmember Wilsey?
Yes, thank you, Muir. I just a question, Jackie, if before, between now and the next reading, if you could, if we could look at the garage options and kind of what the current--
We can take a look at that.
Okay, thank you.
During the first and second reading.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your hands, and it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Item number eight, approval of a resolution to adopt the annual update to the short-term work program and capital improvement element covering the five-year period 2019 to 2024. Ms. Diaboll?
Yes, this is the resolution to adopt the capital improvement element known as the CIE and the short-term work program. So the transmittal bomb to the state for recommendation by PC was on April 16th. Approval by mayor and council to transmit this to the state was on May 11th, and then it was approved by the state on June 6th. They had a few, they had a few advisory comments for us, which has been, have been updated and included in your pocket. So what this is, as for those who don't know, the capital improvement element is a list of all projects that have done by the city that require impact fees or use impact fees. And then the short-term work program is a list of all projects done by, done by the different departments. And every year, we have to do an annual update to that to get approved and by council, adopted, and then, so we have to send this back down to the state. This allows us to receive impact fees, receive grant money from the government to do different projects mainly for transportation, helps fire and police build their, their fire station, new 911 center. This is a very important document, and technically, actually, you're thinking, six months from now, we're starting it all over again. So we just do this very, it's continuous. So if staff recommends approval of the adoption of the CIE and the S2WP, do you, does anybody have any questions?
Does council have any questions? Is there anyone in the public that would like to come forward and speak? Seeing no one approach, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve by councilmember Palermo. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Wilsey. All those in favor, please raise your hands, and it passes unanimously.
Item number nine, the much anticipated approval of the adoption of the Historic District Master Plan. Ms. Diaboll?
Yes, much anticipated. Thank you for that. So we, the timeline, so this started last summer. The first meeting of the Historic District Master Plan Committee was on October 30th of 2018. There were some walking tours on November 3rd and 4th, design workshop on November 27th and 28th of 2018, the Historic District Master Plan Committee meeting on December 6th, committee meeting of the Master Plan Committee on January 8th, an outside meeting at Gate City Brewery on January 14th, an outside meeting in Plum Tree Village on January 16th, an open house on January 23rd, Master Plan Committee meeting on January 29th, Master Plan Committee meeting on February 6th, committee meeting on March 26th, Community Development Transportation Committee on July 24th, adoption of the document on August 12th, 2019. The purpose of this document was for a vision-- The purpose of this document was for a vision to how to accommodate growth in a way that considers best practices in historic preservation, the community desires, and the current regulatory framework. The study area of the historic district is 544 acres, .85 square miles. In the document, they indicate the character areas and the zoning. So these are the characters that are listed, Canton Street, Mimosa, Bullock Avenue, Mill Village, and Highway 9. The zoning in the historic district currently in the Unified Development Code is DR, Downtown Residential, Downtown House, Downtown Shopfront for DS, and Downtown Mixed Use, which is known as DX. The consultant analyzed Roswell's historic patterns related to the residential and commercial throughout the district. There was public outreach, as I indicated. There were walking tours, had 80-plus people at both of them. They were on a Saturday and Sunday in November, the design workshop in November, an open house in January, and of course, all the committee meetings were open to the public. The document includes recommendations and code changes, recommendations to historic preservation, land use, transportation, parks and open space, and of course, the code changes which will come after the adoption of the document. The next few slides, I've taken portions of the document so that you can review, see them on the screen here. The main one will update the character areas, amend the overlay, build on the identified character areas that we currently have, reflect the diverse existing patterns, and provide for greater protection in the areas with the most historic resources. One of the main things that came out of the master plan was creating an area called the Protected View Zone and the compatibility rule. So the Protected View Zone, to explain what that is, it's the approach that focuses the changes on portions of sites along a street because those areas are most visible and tend to define the overall feel of the historic district. So an explanation of this is given here to show a protective view zone. So if a setback is 10 feet, and that's listed on our regulatory plan, and if you have a protected view zone that has 40 feet, you show, you would end up having a 50-foot, basically almost think a 50-foot area. And then if you have a side street, you might have 25 feet. So within that section, you might only be able to build two stories at the street level. Once you go past that, you'll be able to go up to three or four, based on what's allowed in the code. That helps to try to give you an explanation of the protective view zone. I also have a document if we need to look at it. This is the chart that's in there. It is very long, and it is hard to understand for some, but basically, it's got all the character areas listed on the left. And then what they did, they have mapped all the historic properties in those sections. So if you take Bullock Avenue, which is at the top, based on that, there are seven out of 10 of the structures in there are considered historic properties. So that's 70%. We then, the building types have to meet the character area. The building style is per existing design guidelines. The facade width, all max feet of 60 feet in width. A max in the protected view zone, the two stories. Remainder of the site could be three stories. The primary street setbacks, you see the regular regulatory plan. The side street, side interior, and rear would be UDC. So coming after the adoption of this document would be the code changes. Included in those code changes is the regulating plan that the consultant has done for us. The entire historic district has been mapped with setbacks. So this document reflects the setbacks that are already currently on the regulating map that the consultant has done for the city. This is the remainder of that chart, as I'm taking a look at Bullock Avenue, the 70%, the facade width of 60 feet, protective view zone of two stories, and max three stories. This gives you an example of what it would look like, kind of like a drawing there, showing you what they would do, because then it would show its setbacks. So if you have two stories at the street in the protected view zone, then once you get out of that view zone, you'd be able to go up to the three or four stories, whatever is allowed. The compatibility rule. So what they've also done is mapped all the historic structures in the city. So basically, what they're doing is showing there's compliance with compatibility and what's around it. So that's where the protective view zone and everything came from. One of the other things that is currently in the document is to allow the HPC to have some alternative compliance. So with that, during the code changes, would be indicating what we would allow as alternative compliance, that if someone came to the HPC and met the reasons, the criteria that we put in there, then the HPC would have some options to indicate, "Well, we feel that this meets the alternative compliance suggestions." Currently, in our code, the Design Review Board has some modifications that they can do minimally, and this would be similar. We would add some minimal items that the HPC would be able to change if they see it meets all the requirements under alternative compliance. So that would be basically, are there clear and compelling reasons why somebody should ask for this? Does it satisfy the intent of the historic district? Does it meet the criteria of the CMA, which is their certificate of appropriateness? And does it demonstrate exceptional performance with the guidelines? That's one of the items that's currently in there. So the compatibility rule, it's to continue to use this rule contained in there to regulate architecture. And then also, under one of the historic preservation items, we'd be updating the official historic buildings map. We restrict all materials and areas, require the design of compatible front yards, require the preservation and replanting of trees that are visible from the street. There's also requirements in here for lighting, establish the two lighting standards for the streets, the historic district and Grove Way. Currently, the HPC has been working with the Transportation Department, discussing lighting and the types of lighting. This would give them some ideas and options of what they can use. There's also some recommendations for art and signage. Land use designations to promote a balance, commercial mix. Housing options, green buildings. Parks and open space to allow for pedestrian lighting in public spaces throughout the district, encourage environmentally sustainable and green energy features. Transportation improvements and recommendations that came out of here are to improve the intersections of Atlanta and Marietta, Atlanta Street and Marietta Highway for pedestrians, improve the walkway between City Hall to Canton Street, create the trail system throughout the historic district, add new sidewalks and widen existing sidewalks, make pedestrian improvements on Green Street, mid-block crossings, traffic calming, explore additional traffic calming on Canton, and add streets to better connect the southern part of the historic district. One thing related to transportation, a separate study was going on while this was going on with TSW, with just the Transportation Department, related to some pedestrian connections. And I believe they've already brought that forward to council and showed you guys that at a committee meeting a few months ago. Staff recommends approval and adoption of the historic district master plan. Should this be adopted this evening, the next steps are for staff to bring the code changes to committee. We are scheduled to bring those right now, at this point in time, to the August committee meeting. And if those are ready to move forward, we will bring those through the process in order to start making the codified changes within the Unified Development Code. Do you have any questions for staff?
Ms. Diaboll, I would like to compliment you, the rest of staff, our consultant, and the committee members on this project, because it certainly has worked out very well. I compliment our consultant that was able to herd cats and come to a consensus, and I just think it's great. I think the work you've done is great, and thank you so much for seeing this through and bringing it forward. Are there questions and comments from council? Yes, Councilmember Judy.
Thank you, mayor. Congratulations. Coming on council, I knew that one of the most important things that we would need to do as soon as possible was come up with a plan for our historic district. There's a lot of different feelings of the way it should go, and I felt like if we were able to put together a true mix of those different folks and different ideas, and have a consultant, outside consultant, kind of put that all together and come up with a plan where, after we adopt this and then codify it, everybody that comes into our historic district knows where they're going, and I think it will clarify where we're going as a city. And it will take a lot of the politics of what is going, what has gone on out of this. We will be able to look at a plan that's been done by a group of folks that are from all different backgrounds that have come to an agreement, and it will allow us to move forward as a city. So I'm so excited that we are able to get this done tonight, and hopefully, we can adopt it and get to codifying it, and then follow in this on any plan going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I'd just like to second, just actually third all those comments. I think this has just been a wonderful collaborative effort, and applaud your efforts, and Alister and your department for putting it together, and for all the folks who served on the committee, and it was such a collaborative effort, and for the public that came out for all the walking tours. Just, it's very clear that preservation of the historic district is so important to all of us, and I look forward to moving forward with adopting this, the plan.
Thank you. One thing I would like to add, which I guess I should have had it at the end here, is the committee did a fabulous job. We had a lot of conversation, going back and forth for months, but at the very end, we had support, and I'm very pleased with this document. I know our historic preservation planner is very pleased with the document. I believe all the committee members, those in attendance this evening and those who couldn't make it, were pleased with how this came out. So I'm very happy with the document. Thank you.
We are pleased as well. Thank you. Additional comments from council? Seeing no hands up, is there anyone in the public that would like to come forward and speak? Not seeing anyone approach, do we have a motion?
We do. And again, so Ms. Diaboll, definitely congratulations to you, all of community development. So Alis, great job with the entire team, and then really, all the volunteers, the committee that was created where each elected official had appointed one member to serve, as well as so many other volunteers that were, you know, have great expertise and crucial backgrounds to help out. So I think just really, really impressive job. And so with that, I absolutely am excited to motion to approve the adoption of the historic district master plan.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Palermo. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Judy. All those in favor, please raise your hands, and it passes unanimously. Before we go into public safety, I'd like to take a 10-minute break, and we'll be back here at 9:10. They also allow for 40-day video archiving. One of the reasons that's important, if we do have an issue in a school, we have a kidnapping, we have an Amber Alert, there's some type of other emergency, that video is immediately retrievable by officers so that we can identify where we need to be looking first. Redspeed's also been awarded the first 20 contracts in the state of Georgia. They are really leading the front as far as this program and have some of the best equipment out there with the vendors that we've looked at. Redspeed has tools like ALPR and real-time video that allow us in our dispatch center to be able to look real-time at that incident, identify if we have sexual predators, Amber Alerts, other things of that nature, so we can deploy resources as readily and immediately as possible. Redspeed's far ahead of the competition on program establishment. They've already worked with GDOT in establishing the permitting process for the state. In addition, they're also working with the Department of Revenue on how they're going to handle issues such as delinquent payments and how that process is going to work. One of the reasons this is such a benefit to the city is it's zero cost to the city. This program is entirely violator-funded. Redspeed will install, maintain, operate, and manage all the software and requirements for, excuse me, for this program. In addition to safer school zones, the city will get advanced safety tools, like discussed the ALPR and video, to allow us to deploy resources where they're needed. Authorized officers will also have access to regional enforcement tools in cooperation with other departments that utilize this resource so that we can share information to be as effective as possible. Some of the unique speed enforcement tools, as discussed, they use IR illumination instead of flash, which prevents distraction to drivers. They offer color, video, and night recordings, video-based enforcement, obviously, remote video archival retrieval, and traffic speed reports that allow us to immediately determine if this program is working for the city of Roswell, or if we need to look at other alternatives to be able to address the situation. The contracting in this is fair and flexible. Revenue is positive from day one, so essentially 35% of the revenue generated from this program goes back to the company to support their expenses of providing the equipment, providing the software, providing the monitoring. The other 65% goes straight back to law enforcement for other safety-initiated funds or other programs that are used to determine public safety. There is a one-year termination convenience if the city is not satisfied after one year. This is one of the topics that came up when we presented this to committee, as there's a $10,000 fee if we terminate before that one year. What we were able to work out with the vendor is essentially a $0 risk to the city. So up to that $10,000, let's say we generate $3,000 after we initiate the program, and we run it for a month, and we decide this program just isn't for Roswell, it's not working, we would essentially give them that $3,000 and they would cover the balance. I think it is important to recognize that they are putting a lot of money forward. They do have to do GDOT permitting, they do have to put signage out, they do have to install the equipment and purchase all the relative communications for security purposes. So there's a big upfront cost to the company, so then making it a $0 risk to us is really a huge benefit and a win-win. Prior to starting the program, they will work with us to establish how we want our citations to look, how the mailers look, to make sure it's up to the professional standards of the city of Roswell. They also provide updated signage in the school zones to let people know that this is an automated school enforcement program, and also a warning period. So when this program starts, there's a 30-day warning period before implementation of any actual charged violations. What we're seeing across the state is there's about a 60% reduction in speeding violations in that first 30-day period. I can tell you, having done speed enforcement in school zones, to see a 60% reduction in that amount of time is absolutely amazing. After they actually start issuing citations, they're averaging about a 40% drop on top of that, so you're talking about a drastic reduction in speeding in our school zones. They also work with our public information officers to provide pamphlets, information, social media, and those types of things to get the word out to the public. This is very, very important to us. The more people that know that you can get a speeding citation for driving through even when that police officer's not sitting there, the more they slow down. At the end of the day, our goal here is to gain voluntary compliance and to get people to understand that when you're driving through a school zone, there's kids, there's people, there's parents walking, and to get them to obey those rules. We believe that Redspeed is really the best option for the city of Roswell for these reasons. They have the best technology, it is violator-funded, it's $0. They were very helpful with us with working for the contract to make it essentially risk-free to us for any monies coming out of our general fund if we did decide that we didn't want to move forward after a short time. That's all I have. Do you guys have any questions?
Does Council have any questions? Yes, Councilmember Judy.
So as the father of a seven-year-old who started second grade today, I've been noticing since our presentation in committee actually how fast people do drive in school zones. And this would be a good reminder. I've got a couple of questions I think it's just important to clarify for those watching. I think we might have gone over some of these at the committee meeting. So right now, we have how many schools and how many patrolmen to watch those schools?
We currently have 15 school zones in the city of Roswell. We have nine officers currently assigned to traffic enforcement, so as you can imagine, we can't be at all of them all the time.
So this helps patrol those zones. Also, the fine, the ticket you get, will be a civil, not a, will not put points on your license?
That is correct. It's a no points, it is a $75 fee for the first offense, it is $150 for the second and subsequent offenses, and it is a zero points violation, it's a civil infraction.
Okay. And last, I know a lot of people are very cautious about the sale of data and the privacy associated with this. Could you speak to Red...
Redspeed's policy.
Speed's policy, sorry.
Yeah, so they don't sell any data, it's all private, they follow the same CGIS compliance rules that we follow for GCIC and other protected information, so they do not sell any data at all.
Okay. And lastly, I'd like to thank Redspeed for working with us on basically making this a free trial for the city, no risk, so I will support this.
Thank you. Additional, yes, Councilmember Tyser.
Just real quick, I thank the Redspeed team for making that change, and thank you for bringing it forward in an excellent presentation. I would suggest that the PIO should be worried after that presentation.
Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. So, yeah, great presentation, quick question. Regarding the storage of the data, where will be the location of storage, and for how long they are, you know, apply or they have to comply with, for how long they have to store the data?
So the storage of, are you talking about the real video? So live video is stored for 45 days, it is kept on the server with Redspeed, and then it is deleted after that 45-day period, so after that 45 days, it's no longer accessible.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you. Great, great presentation. So, you know, obviously, safety is most important, you know, especially around our young children, so definitely a great initiative. I'm actually impressed with what a good job you all did with the termination fee and how you negotiated that. Definitely seems like a much better fee for the city related to that. So I just actually have a couple clarifying questions. Is this, the Redspeed and the enforcement, is that 24 hours a day, or is that just during school-type hours?
It is just during school hours.
Okay. Great, thank you, thank you for answering that question. And then, also out of curiosity too, is it set up where if you're one mile over or you're 10 miles over, there's no difference, you're still over, how does that work?
No, actually, part of the House bill actually requires a 10-mile-an-hour over. What we're looking to do is a minimum of 11 miles an hour over just for the reliability of the unit to show that there is speeding, so that's what we're looking to do.
Thanks for the clear answers and good preparation.
Additional questions from Council? Is there anyone in the public? Yes, ma'am, please come forward.
Janet Russell, good presentation, couple of clarifications. Whoever just asked if this was going to be during school hours, or is it just when the yellow light is flashing? That's important. And if it's school hours, well, I guess that's like 7:30 to 3:30 or something every day, Monday through Fridays. Basically, that means all of Woodstock Road will be under surveillance because you have Roswell North, Fellowship Christian, the new middle school coming, Blessed Trinity, Queen of Angels, that's the whole street just about. So it will be interesting to see if the whole street is going to be monitored from 7:30 in the morning till 3:30 in the afternoon, or is it just when the yellow lights are blinking? I think this is a really great idea. Not that many children walk. The first thing that comes to my mind is I have never seen a police officer, maybe I've missed it, directing traffic in front of Vicarry Mill Elementary School, which is on our most-traveled highway in this area, a state road. Only because I pushed did we get the Hawk Crossing Light in there two years ago when the school opened. So I would hope that that would be the first place that they implement this, is on that major thoroughfare, because children actually do walk there. And more importantly, their parents walk them there because they don't have cars. So not every parent is dropping off a kid in a carpool at Vicarry Mill, they are walking there or school busing it. So I would just like clarification on whether it's the whole time school's open, or if it's just when the yellow lights are blinking, because those are selective hours. And that would be good for information for the people that live here, because nobody wants to get that ticket.
Mr. Davidson.
So according to the law, the violations can occur one hour before, during, one hour after the normal hours of school operation and programs for care and supervision of students, before school and after school, and during vacation periods, as the state law allows, basically. So it will be during all those hours.
So that's quite extensive, it's not just when the children are in school, or when the yellow lights are flashing?
Correct.
And could you all please tell us, I know that we're going to have a test site, could you tell us the timeframe on that and where that location is?
Yeah, so it would be between when the school lights start flashing for the school zone, while the students are in school, and then until the school zone lights stop flashing in the afternoon. And we actually are looking at Vicarry Mill just based on the amount of traffic and the amount of children that do walk to that school.
Thank you. Are there, is there anyone else in the public that would like to come forward? Back to Council. Councilmember Zapata?
Thank you. So who would be responsible to put a warning signs? There would be any warning signs about it being recorded?
Yes, sir. So part of the law requires there to be signage, letting them know that it is an automated enforcement zone. So that signage would go up, that would be part of the PIO, where we're reaching out to the community to let them know that the program's taking place. And then obviously, during that first 30-day period, if they did violate it, they would actually get a mailer, letting them know that location is photo-enforced and that that program is beginning with a start date.
Thank you.
Additional questions from Council? One other additional request that I have is that you work with Community Relations to get a press release out on this, because I think it's really important to let our citizens know what the rules are, how to follow the rules, and what's coming next, and not just have them pop up. So I would very much appreciate that. Do we have a motion?
Yes, again, thank you for bringing forward this initiative to reduce speeding in the school zones and improving the safety for the children, and move to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Willsey, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Judy. All those in favor, please raise your hands, and it passes unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember Willsey.
Item number 11, approval of a text amendment to the City of Roswell Code of Ordinances by adding Article 22.9, "Speed Monitoring Systems to Allow for Enforcement Using Automated Speed Detection Cameras Consistent with State Law." This is the first reading.
Mr. Davidson.
Thank you. This is an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances for the city of Roswell by the mayor and council relating to traffic by adding a new Article 22.9 entitled Automated Traffic Enforcement Safety System for the purpose of authorizing the use of automated traffic enforcement safety device in school zones within the city, providing that the title of this ordinance shall be deemed a fair summary and generally relating to automated traffic enforcement safety device in the city, to provide for rules of operation, administration, and enforcement, to provide definitions, to provide for severability, to provide an effective date, to repeal all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and for other purposes. Now therefore be ordained and enacted by the mayor and council of the city of Roswell, Georgia as follows. The foregoing whereas clauses are hereby ratified and confirmed as being true and correct and are hereby made specific part of the ordinance, and the Code of Ordinances of the city of Roswell, Georgia is amended by adding Article 22.9 of the Code of the city to read as follows, the text of which is incorporated herein by reference and ever proved this to be the first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Does Council have any questions? Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this related matter? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Willsey, do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Tyser. All those in favor, please raise your hands, and it passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is Transportation Department, and I would like to call on Councilmember Zapata to introduce us.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 12, approval to install parking kiosks and deploy smartphone application technology. Approval of the parking area excluding the handicap parking spaces. Approval of a resolution for the parking rates for on-street parking spots at the south end of Canton Street and Elizabeth Way. An approval of a budget amendment, BA 10015850081219, in the amount of $8,820.
Thank you, Councilmembers Zapata. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So just to give you some background on the paid parking, so we've had requests from the Historic Roswell Associate Merchants Association to improve parking availability and turnover, and we have had taken some other measures, like leasing a couple, about three parking lots around the city. And last year's staff was directed to go look at some technologies and some research for the paid parking options around the city. So the city implemented an ordinance back in July, and at the time, the council directed staff to look at different implementation options, including the kiosk and the smartphone app, and then the enforcement. And then at July committee, the recommendation was to bring on-street paid parking on Canton Street and Elizabeth Way to council for a vote, so that's why we are here today. This is the area of discussion, the green highlighted area that you see, these are the spots we are proposing to designate for paid parking. It's about 20 spots along Elizabeth Way, and then 14 along Canton Street on the east side, towards the south end of the street, and then we have about four spots on the west side of Canton Street. So that makes a total of 38 spots that we are proposing to be converted to paid parking And then, so the technologies we are proposing to move forward with, it's a smartphone app with a company called Park Mobile, and the kiosk from a company called Parkion, and that would be the same kiosk as we already have at the East Alley behind, around the corner. So the way the smartphone app and the kiosk works is for the smartphone app, there's a zero, no-cost startup cost, so no setup, no installation or signage fee for the city, but that's with a three-year contract, and it could be operational within four to six weeks from the notice to proceed that we could issue after you approve. And it's been, it's available in other cities around us. In the kiosk, we already have the one kiosk from the same company, so of course, the users are familiar with it already, and it's just an alternate to the smartphone app. We wanted to provide both options to our residents. Some of the costs, so for the smartphone, I guess any credit card transaction, there's a 3% to 4% fee for debit card processing paid by the city, and then there's a 35 cents fee to the user per transaction, and it applies even if they're parking within the first couple of hours, which we are proposing to be free. And for the kiosk, the initial equipment cost is $8,100 with a monthly cellular connection fee of $60 to $70 a month, and then the same 3% to 4% fee for the credit debit card processing. And we hope to recoup the costs in about a year, but we have not incorporated the cost of enforcement, which would come, I guess, after we end the initial testing period. So here are the rates, they're the exact same as were approved for the East Alley with the resolution back in April 2018. We have a resolution attached today. So we are proposing the first two hours free prior to 6:00 PM, and after that, it's, for the first two hours, it's a dollar per hour, and then you can see rest of the, rest of the hourly rates here up on the screen. So for the enforcement, for now, we're just going to suggest to continue the current technique. We've been issuing warning cards to the violators. So we need action on three things. It could, I guess, just be a one vote, but we need approval for three things, basically. It's to install the parking kiosk and deploy the smartphone application, and it needs approval of a budget amendment, BA 10015850081219, in the amount of $8,820. And also the approval of the parking area, that's designating the spots in that area excluding the handicap spots, and then approval of the attached resolution for the parking rates for the on-street parking spots shown at the south end of Canton Street and Elizabeth That's all I had for the presentation.
Does Council have any questions? Yes, Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Ralph, for the presentation. What would you say that is the main purpose of installing paid parking on street spots?
The parking, turnover? Turnover?
And this will help the local merchants?
It would definitely help the local merchants, because you will have a higher turnover, more of residents could visit more often, versus, you know, restaurant employees or others who are parking there for several hours at one time at those prime spots.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Additional questions from Council? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and speak? Do we have a motion?
Yes, thank you. So motion to approve item number 12 of today's agenda?
Motion to approve by Councilmember Zapata, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Tyser. All those in favor, please raise your hands, and it passes unanimously. Mr. Davidson.
Thank you, Mayor. The only item I have is a recommendation for closure to discuss personnel litigation and real estate.
Do we have a motion?
Motion for closure.
Motion by Councilmember Judy, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Tyser. All those in favor, please raise your hands. It passes unanimously, we are adjourned.